It now being a little after 2 o'clock, I will call the January 27, 2025 Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. This meeting is being presented, recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. Our first agenda item is the presentation of the Boston Post cane to Inez Murphy. A little background on the Post cane, if you're not familiar with it. This was started in 1891 when Edwin Grozer purchased the Boston Post, the newspaper in the Boston area. And he noticed a bid on unclaimed shipment of canes and came up with the idea for the Boston Post cane. Grozer sent letters to the selectmen of about 700 New England towns. The canes were given to the Board of Selectmen in each town. The cases were presented to the oldest male resident of each town, up until 1930, when ladies were included. In Plimpton, the recipient must have lived in town for 10 years or more. The recipient holds the honor for life. Some people didn't want to receive the cane because they didn't want their age revealed. Others believed the cane was jinxed. We're very pleased to be able to present this to you, Inez, the Boston Post cane. And knowing you, I can't wait for some remarks.
Yes.
Do the others want pictures?
Yeah, we're going to have these guys so that they can...
I'd like to be 60. Could you arrange that? Since I got the magic cane, can I go back?
Inez, 30's really good.
So about 10 years ago, we awarded the cane. I had the audacity to ask the recipient what her key to longevity was, and she didn't think for but an instant and said schnaps every day. You know how your secret...
They go around yelling people.
Could we do a group picture of all of us over there? Okay. Everybody get up. Everybody who came here today, get up. All right, with all of us? Come on, Daddy. You need to be in back. You need to be in back. Riley, look up at the camera.
20 great green trees.
Riley, you want Daddy to hold you? Riley.
Hey, that's like amazing.
She wants to see Penny. Riley, go. You can see Penny out there. All right, Harper, go kneel down next to Penny.
We're going to take a picture of Riley.
Riley, shuck. Go over there. She wants us to next to Penny.
Jacey.
Look at me, honey. Riley. Thank you.
Pepper, you're so sweet. But now you're...
You will be a symbol. Yes. Down to the cane.
So should we stay for the meeting or should we leave?
You can leave if you like.
I want to go back to my house.
My foot Sunday day.
Yeah. Are you coming? All right, Riley, let's go. She's so crazy, girl, today. She's like, I work here.
I'll give him a few minutes. Miss Amy.
That's the sign sheet now.
Wayne. Oh, it's right there. They're talking about Dana.
Cover, over here. It's okay.
I can do that, Mr. Dana.
I thought we were sitting down like we're done. I mean, I can talk about Habitat for Humanity and not remember having...
Yeah, so... In talking to a few folks, some of them are a little touchy with their...
Just like me. It doesn't matter with your lips. So that you can just go like, oh, well, whatever.
It's a business decision.
It's like the trajectory is going up.
And if ever there was a year, getting some stores out to other teams or flower station and...
Yeah, this is not a big time.
They're all peeling out now.
Is the racket for the most amount of town hall people?
Yes, I asked them already.
We're going to start up our meeting. So anybody who wants to stay, they can stay. Thank you.
See you later, colleagues.
Hi, Nancy. Congratulations.
How are you? What was that march?
Going over here. See you later, Nancy. Actually, if you stand by this microphone here, Amy. Yep, no, this little black thing.
Oh, this? It doesn't look like a microphone to me. Okay.
So what we're doing is we're recording for cable. I wasn't specific enough. Amy thought we were just going to have a roundtable conversation.
It's fine. So we're just going to talk generally about...
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, yeah, nothing specific, just generally.
Okay.
Herding cats.
Our next agenda item is a conversation with Amy Bellmore from Habitat for Humanity. I have to get Wayne to rope him in and get him up. Can you pick us up, John? Are you... Too much noise?
He can hear us.
So Amy, we invited you to know more about the Habitat for Humanity program.
Sure.
I've heard you speak before, and we've talked about how we would like to do something in Plimpton. We haven't been able to find a good location yet that isn't wet. So tell us a little about the Habitat for Humanity.
Sure, sure. There certainly are... There's a lot of information to share about Habitat, but we were founded in 1997 as an official affiliate of Habitat International. And we serve the six towns. Habitat of Greater Plymouth is specific to the six-town area that includes Plymouth, Carver, Plimpton, Kingston, Middleborough, and Lakeville. And we build primarily... We're building and repairing homes at the affordable rate, so we're very specifically reaching an underserved population, folks who are making... Our households that are making up to 60% of the area median income.
Yeah, and how is that defined?
It's a HUD definition, so that through the housing and urban development, the federal government is setting those rates, and those same rates are then carried through in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and overseen by what used to be called the HCD, is now called the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And so we don't have control over what the numbers are, but they do change annually. And basically, for other developers who are out there building affordable housing, they are required to serve 80% or below. So people who are making... Households that are making 80% or below the area median income. And where Habitat reaches that 60% mark, we are getting to those households who don't have traditional means of financing. Oftentimes, they can't get a loan through a bank. They might have some credit issues in their past that Habitat is willing to work with them on or look at differently than a bank would. And we're really able to provide those affordable home ownership opportunities in a very life-changing, transformative way to the households that wouldn't ordinarily have this opportunity. They simply couldn't buy a home if it weren't for the type of financing arrangements that we're able to deliver. And we were able to deliver those results because we are using volunteer labor to really keep our costs down. We use unskilled labor with supervision by a licensed construction supervisor, but we have community members that are coming from all walks of life to accomplish the work of building affordable homes. And we are out there soliciting donations and pro bono materials and services to really keep our costs down. And so because of that, we're able to deliver homes that are roughly 50 to 60% of the cost compared to what a for-profit developer would deliver. And so it really is... It's incredibly rewarding for community members to get involved in a hands-on way. And there's a lot of other volunteer opportunities for us, you know, within the organization. We are housed right at the Plimpton-Carver line, so we are so very close to being in Plimpton, literally right next to Tractor Supply, which is, of course, on the Plimpton side of the line, and we're right over it. So come see us. Our office is right tucked inside the Restor, which is really another wonderful way to engage with Habitat is to either donate items or shop at the Restor. This is a social enterprise that is Habitat-specific across the country. Not all Habitat affiliates have a Restor. We opened the first one in Massachusetts, and now there are several others across the state. But we basically take in gently-used furniture, appliances, lighting, and more, and sell those at deep discount to the public. Anybody can shop there. We really only take high-quality items, saleable items. We don't take everything that is offered to us because we really want to keep a good quality. And when people walk in the store, if you have before... I think John said you had come in recently. You'd be surprised at what you find. We say that every day. You're surprised at what you find at the Restor, and the deals that you can get are really amazing. And all of that to say, all of the proceeds from those sales support the work of building houses. And so that's when I say "social enterprise," that's what that's all about. And, you know, we are building a house right now in Plymouth. We're working on engineering for another one in Plymouth right now, so we're hoping to start that later in the spring in terms of actual shovels in the ground. But we would love to work in Plimpton. We have spoken with you guys many times before. The wet areas are an issue, but, you know, we look forward to having those continued conversations. And like I said, we have another property down in Carver that we've been working on for a little while. We've built in... I should say, we've built homes, but we also repair or provide critical home repair. We call our critical home repair Brush with Kindness. And we have done work in Plimpton in this regard before. That is providing, well, critical home repairs, so things like weatherization, accessibility ramps, broken stairs, broken windows, not cosmetic issues, but, you know, fundamental safety issues.
How do people find you for that?
Oh, yeah, same way they would find us for home ownership. Give our office a call, and I can list our phone number here in a minute, or visit our website. And it's still... That is still an income-qualified opportunity.
Okay.
So just as our home ownership opportunities are income-qualified as well, so too is Brush with Kindness. And that is limited in terms of the scope of what we can do because we are using volunteers for that work. So just like we... When we're building homes, volunteers do, gosh, probably 85% of the construction, but what our volunteers don't do is plumbing, electrical, septic work, and roofing. Right? So all of those categories, we often do get phone calls, you know, can you come and work on my roof or work on some plumbing repairs? And the answer unfortunately is no, we can't do that.
And that's because of the licensing?
Yeah, of course, of course. Yep. Yep. You definitely want to make sure that you have your electrical wiring done by someone who knows. So as do we. And so, let's see. My goodness. You know, bottom line is, in terms of your audience who might be listening, we will be opening up this application round for the home that we are building in, that we're doing the engineering work on right now. That, I think, will be open hopefully by middle spring, so folks can pay attention to our website, our social media. We're very active on Facebook and Instagram, LinkedIn as well. And importantly, too, for those who are interested in either owning a home or... A lot of community members enjoy hearing the fact that homeowners, they're getting an incredible opportunity to own a home at a really reduced rate, but they're also putting in sweat equity hours, and what... That's Habitat term, sweat equity hours. And what that means is homeowners are putting in each adult 250 hours helping to build their home alongside our volunteers. So again, doesn't matter what walk of life they come from, they can help out just as our volunteers do, and they become really invested in the process, in the people, and in the final product.
That includes disabled people, too?
Yeah. I mean, if there were a disabled situation, we would come up with other ways for that adult to support the organization. So it could be in the office, it could be helping at the Restor. It could be helping with fundraising, making phone calls, helping with mailings. But yes, it would be... We would work with that individual to come up with, you know, a plan so that that support is still part of the...
Is there any preference given to seniors or veterans, or is it just everybody's on the same?
The only way for... And this is governed through the state, so our houses typically... And it's up to the municipality where we're working to decide, but most, as you well know, most of the... All of the service area towns that I mentioned are below their 10% of affordable housing, right? So none of those six towns and many, many others in the state are not at their 10%. So everybody's trying to get inventory on the subsidized housing inventory. And so if we're going that pathway, then we have to follow the state regulations, which is to say that if it's a single home, only one house being built on one lot, a preference can't be assigned to that. So it can't be a local preference, it can't be a veteran preference. A preferred project can't constitute more than 70% of... I'm going into too many numbers here, but you have to have at least two units or more in a single project to put a preference on it. And that's happened for us once before. We built three homes side by side down in Plymouth, and two of them did have a veteran preference. That was the first veteran preference in the state, actually. We were part of creating that opportunity because the local preference had existed. There are asset limits that's important for when we're looking at the household income for qualification, so we... These... It's important to know, we don't gift these houses. That's most... Some people don't realize, these houses not being given to the homeowner. They are becoming mortgage holders at an affordable rate, over typically a 30-year term. And so we are looking for people who have solid employment history because they are going to... They need to be paying their mortgage, just as anybody needs to pay their mortgage and their tax and their prop... And their insurance and other household expenses. And so when we look at their income, we're looking to ensure... Not only... We want to make sure that their max is at or below that 60% limit that I mentioned, but they also have to make enough money to afford the mortgage, as I mentioned. And so that's important, too. And they have to agree to the sweat equity model. We also offer financial education, so all of our homeowners go through a portion of the Money Smart program. I don't know if you've ever heard of that. Many of the banks, local banks, put on a Money Smart program just to help their customers understand good financial literacy. And so we have a committee of folks who helps... Who does some of that training after the homeowner has been chosen. And that selection is done by way of a lottery. So all of the households that are qualified go into a lottery, and then it's a random draw. And there are asset limits. That's in addition to income qualifications, there's an asset limit as well. And so for seniors who might be... Who might be looking to downsize or what have you, they would be an asset limit. And also with regards to Habitat, we are certainly open, and the house that we're building right now, that we're halfway through, is a two-bedroom. There may be a future time where we will continue to build two bedrooms or potentially even one bedrooms. Our history has typically been three to four bedrooms for family housing. And yeah, so it's all dependent on what the lot of land will allow.
So thank you. Glad you're here.
Sure.
Appreciate you've been here in the past. And we're actually really interested in doing this. We've just had a horrible time finding an appropriate property.
Yeah.
One question that we've asked in the past is, I think there's a... The big dream is a big lot of land that might become multi-use, open space, municipal well, farming, and cluster housing. Habitat for Humanity, anything new on that, on cluster housing that you all have been involved in in the past?
We haven't... Our affiliate, the six... Habitat of Greater Plymouth has not done cluster housing, other than that three, that group of three that I just mentioned, but that's not really, I think, what you're talking about, Mark. But other habitats across the state and across the country, I mean, there's... We all operate under the Habitat International umbrella. That means that we're following certain protocols, and it's certainly the general philosophy and the general model, but across the country, habitats are trying all sorts of different innovative approaches to housing. And so certainly, cluster housing has been done, master planning communities have been done, like some really interesting work is being done elsewhere in the country as well. So it's... I can't give you a Greater Plymouth example of that beyond that group of three that I mentioned, but that didn't include some of the features that you're talking about. That just happened to be a large enough piece of land that the town of Plymouth wanted to put three units on. There are some shared utilities and shared driveway and things like that, but not common space, not, you know, farming, as you mentioned.
So beyond your enclave and the more national level, there potentially are resources and wisdom and...
Oh, we have, yeah. I have a monthly phone call, so there are 17 affiliates in Massachusetts, and we share information all the time. And he just walked away from a computer screen with someone else had another question. So the executive directors... I should have introduced myself. I'm Amy Bellmore, I'm the executive director. And we have these monthly phone calls and then ad hoc email, you know, communications, phone calls, all the time, sharing information.
I look forward to the day we're doing business.
Yeah, we would love it. We'd love to be able to find... I know we've run into not only the wetland issue, but natural heritage issues, rare and endangered species issues. We've looked at a number of pieces of land here in Plimpton, so we'll keep looking. And certainly, the other thing, since this is going out to a wider audience, there are times where we have accepted gifts of land. We built a house in Kingston just four years ago, and that was a gift of land. And so if there are listeners that have land, which is... We are registered 501(c)(3), so there is tax benefit to not only financial donations to support Habitat, but also gifts of that nature. We are very, very willing to talk about those. Happy to, yeah.
So mentioning 501(c)(3) is aside from gift of land, a monetary gift?
Sure. Yep, we're always in need, and this is nonprofit work, so every day we are seeking and in need of financial support. You know, we are... We still have to buy all the materials to support building a house. We do get some good, nice donations and discounts, but lumber is not cheap these days, as people probably realize, and so the expenses do add up. So we have a way...
So listeners out there, here's an amazing resource that does wonderful things on the South Shore.
Right here. Yeah, and Plimpton residents are very welcome to submit applications or get involved as volunteers. Come build with us. Everybody who does so loves it. It's really a great experience. And so our website, I'll just rattle it off for listeners, it's just hfhplymouth.org. That's our website. H F H.
And go to the store.
And go to the store, yeah. I guarantee you, you'll be surprised what you see. And we're expanding the store, too, so soon enough it'll be a little bit bigger. Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised how big it was to begin with.
Yeah. Any other questions I can answer?
You said you had a telephone number that you were going to give out?
Oh, sure. It's 508-866-4188. And we can be reached anytime there, too.
And you said hfhplymouth...
And an email, a general email address would be info@hfhplymouth.org. So any general questions about anything, we can answer that way.
Questions? No? No? Amy, thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Try to figure something out.
Yeah.
Okay, we have next the approval of town meeting and elections calendar and elected positions for ballots.
We can get this out of the way first.
Do we have to read the full ballot or just the motion?
Unless you have anything you want to say before I read the motion.
So I make a motion to approve the town meeting and elections calendar, including the list of elected positions for the ballot as provided by the town clerk. A second. All those in favor? Hi. Great. So we're now going to move into public hearing.
Do you want the warrants paid?
The what?
The warrants paid.
You can give the number, Bray.
Yeah, go ahead.
$6,297.
Okay, so I have to read some of the hearing notice, which I have to find. Bray, have you got a hearing notice there?
Sure, you can read from this.
Okay, public hearing. Public hearing to consider...
of that nature, we are very, very willing to talk about those. Happy to, yeah.
So, mentioning 501(c)(3) is, aside from gift of land, a gift, a monetary gift?
Sure, we, we're always in need, and this is nonprofit work, so every day we are, we are seeking and in need of financial support. You know, we are, we still have to buy all the materials to support building a house. We do get some good, nice donations and discounts, but lumber is not cheap these days, as people probably realize, and so the expenses do add up. So, we have a way...
So, listeners out there, here's an amazing resource that does wonderful things on the South Shore.
Right here. Yeah, and Plimpton residents are very welcome to submit applications or get involved as volunteers. Come build with us. Everybody who does so loves it. It's really a great experience. And so, our website, I'll just rattle it off for listeners, it's just H F H Plymouth.org. That's our website. H F H.
And go to the store.
And go to the store, yeah. You would guarantee you'll be surprised what you see. And we're expanding the store, too, so soon enough it'll be a little bit bigger. Yeah.
Yeah, I was surprised how big it was to begin with.
Yeah. Any other questions I can answer?
You said you had a telephone number that you were going to give out?
Oh, sure. It's 508-866-4188. And we can be reached anytime there, too.
And you said H F H at Plymouth dot...
H F H Plymouth.org. And an email, a general email address would be info@H F H Plymouth.org. So, any general questions about anything, we can answer that, that way.
Questions? No?
Questions?
Amy, thank you for coming.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Try to figure something out.
Okay, we have next the approval of town meeting and elections calendar and elected positions for ballots.
We can get this out of the way first.
Do we have to read the full ballot, or just the motion?
Unless you have anything you want to say before I read the motion.
So, I make a motion to approve the town meeting and elections calendar, including the list of elected positions for the ballot, as provided by the town clerk.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, we're now going to move into public hearing.
Do you want the warrants paid?
The what?
The warrants paid.
You can give the number, Bray.
Yeah, go ahead.
Six thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Okay, so, I have to read some of the hearing notice, which I have to find. Bray, have you got a hearing notice there?
Yes.
Do you want this?
Sure, you can read, read from this.
Okay, public hearing, public hearing to consider the application of EverSource for the removal of an old pole and to relocate and install a new pole on Winnetoxet Road, based on work order and Plan 17232258, dated May 23, 2024. Any comments?
No.
No?
So, if you make a... I would make a motion to open the public hearing per the notice.
So, I make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, is there anybody? Yes, ma'am.
I'm from EverSource.
Okay.
So, the reason for this relocating a pole and putting a new pole in is the replacement of the bridge, it's a Mass DOT project, and when we met with them, for the construction, the way that they need to operate their equipment, it was determined that they need to move the lines across the street. So, we would be moving one pole across the street and then putting a new pole in, because the span of the lines was too long.
Do you have a question, Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin Rafferty, Winnetoxet Road, my wife Jackie. We are butters, and we did receive a public hearing notice about this, and we were just a little confused, because this, this work has already happened.
The pole has already happened?
The poles have already been in place?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah. So, I didn't know if, if there was something else going on that I wasn't aware of, or, but, yeah, the, the new pole is there, the lines have been redirected, and, yeah, so...
We weren't aware of it, that's obvious.
Yeah, it's already taken place.
Hmm.
Okay.
I don't know what to say. I guess we just move on unless...
Yeah, okay, so, again, we were confused. I, you know, I didn't know if there was something else coming along that we weren't aware of.
No, I'm going to drive by after this hearing, because this work should not be done until we get approval from you. There's a process in place at EverSource to prevent this, and I will, like I said, I'm going to drive by, take pictures, and I'm going to bring it up with the supervisor tomorrow.
And if there is, you know, if that, send us feedback on what the others...
Absolutely, absolutely.
...will come in.
Can you still, though, take the vote, so that if it turns out that that was other work, we don't want to hold up the bridge project?
Which I think includes both in the public hearings, seeking those in favor, seeking those with concerns.
Correct. Yes. So, you can close the evidentiary portion of the hearing, you should do a motion for that.
So, there's no other comments from...
Just that it looks, it looks as though, based on the diagram that came with the notice, it looks as though that everything is done according to this diagram.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like there's a problem.
Right, but again, there's a process.
Yeah.
Right.
So, nobody's against the motion?
Are there any comments of anyone against it?
Okay. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and to approve the poll request from EverSource.
Second. Poll isn't big?
Aye.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it, Jackie.
Is there, is now the time to bring up something new, or do I have to go through a process to have something discussed? Something totally different from...
What would it be?
Yeah, what do you...
Bridge project.
What does it pertain to?
It pertains to traffic, vehicular traffic, speeding.
If you can send us something, that would be great, because we have a police lieutenant who's supposed to be managing an entire traffic, safety, speeding campaign.
Okay, yeah, it has to do with speed limit signs.
Yep.
And...
Is this on Winnetoxet or on...
This is on Elm Street.
Elm?
Most, yeah, mostly Elm Street. There are no speed limit signs on Elm Street.
Okay.
At the, at either end of it.
So, this is an endless thorn in our sides that we endlessly work on, and I think we take your concerns seriously, but it probably open meeting requires us to put it up as an agenda.
We can put it on our next meeting, that's for sure.
Glad to have you in, or a letter describing your concerns, and then allows us to have the discussion.
Yeah, okay. And it should be taken up with you, and I shouldn't go see the highway superintendent or...
Wouldn't hurt to talk to him, but feel free to come, and we'll get it on the agenda, and we'll bring him in, but if you want to talk to him ahead of time.
Or if you can send us something with your concerns ahead of time, we could funnel it through him and the police officer who's supposed to be managing that, and they can work together and figure out what's going on.
We do get a grant every year, last couple of years anyways, to work these speed programs. So, we should be able to do something. I know every time we pave a road, the speed increases.
Yeah.
It's just a fact, I like...
That's part of it, it's, you know, well, anyways, I will, I will get something to you.
Great, great, appreciate it.
We'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay, we've done all that? We did the public hearing?
So, we've been working on a lot of budget-related discussions, and we're commencing the finance committee process. We had a regional meeting just recently with some of the school folks, representatives from Plimpton, Kingston, and Halifax. And at this point in time, the numbers that we've received from the school district for Silver Lake, for a level service budget, they're projecting a 13.37% increase, and for Dennett, a 19.7% increase, which obviously is not sustainable and not possible, given our current calculations. And we are operating with some estimates in place. The governor just released the first round of cherry sheet numbers for fiscal '26, so we're about as up to date as we can be at this point in time, but there's no way that we would be able to support that type of an increase. And Kingston and Halifax, based on that public meeting that I attended about a week ago, they are not able to support those level of increases either, so...
Do they get the same percentages, or are they higher?
Theirs are a little bit higher than ours. One of them was more like 20%, and the other one was 23.4%. Don't quote me on the exact, but in that ballpark. So, I think that the school-related discussion is going to, you know, be a significant one as far as our overall budgeting plan goes. So, that's...
My concern there has been, I, with all the information that's coming across, either in the paper or however, I have yet to understand how 2024 to 2025 to 2026, I understand special needs is driving some of it, but it feels like there's a piece that's being glossed over.
I would concur with that. To me, if it's a level service budget, you could ultimately project out the budget, and then maybe you have to show special education separately, so that people can fully understand. And you should be able to go through and figure out contractual obligations and those sorts of things. Also, on that same vein, and as disturbing, they did for, Kingston and Halifax, the school district did release tiers of cuts. So, if they had to cut X percent and X percent, and they immediately went to cutting positions, most of those being teaching positions, so...
You should start with the administrators.
No comment, but I'm just presenting what was said at that discussion, so more to come, but I don't know what that's going to mean, even on the town side of some of these. It takes up such a great percentage of all three towns' budgets.
So, is our focal point, Jason Frazier?
And John Wilhelmson.
Okay, so they're leading the charge in terms of...
Correct, correct. And then they did mention the regionalization study, and it sounds like the Plimpton School Committee will participate, if not for anything else, just to keep tabs on the discussion and see where it's going. It never hurts to have all the information and to be able to understand, you know, what might come out of that. But that's going on as well. At last check, we still, so we, meaning us on the town side, I haven't seen anything from them relative to budget numbers.
Okay.
And the school committee, it sounded like, had also received a very small amount of background information. It was basically just the 19.7% increase, with not a lot of backup information, so more to come.
So, more to come.
More to come on that. I attended the Mass Municipal Conference at the end of last week. It was very informative. It's a good program. They have a lot of different speakers, and you learn a lot of different things, whether it's administrative law topics, and, but I think the most interesting part was hearing from a lot of my colleagues about some of their financial constraints. So, this is not a problem that's unique to Plimpton, or unique to the Silver Lake School District. It's a problem all over. And some of us on the more, on the more South Shore, like, local level, we've been putting together some information about what communities have pursued overrides within the last couple years, who might be pursuing that for fiscal '26 or even fiscal '27. So, I'll take that data and I'll put it into a spreadsheet for everybody. But on a larger level, based on my understanding from talking to people at MMA, at that conference, it sounds like it's not just a South Shore issue. It seemed like an alarming number of communities...
I don't remember a number that large in the 35 years I've been involved in Plimpton government, except when two and a half came.
Right.
And other than that, this is staggering. I mean, it's really, given the amount of other things we have coming at us, it's, I don't know how the town's going to be able to afford it. So, anything we can do to help, let us know.
I think just making sure that we're all on the same page, especially as, as we get into February. I mean, if we are going to pursue any alternate plans for funding, I think we need everybody to make a decision on that and be on board with that, because there's a huge public education piece and an outreach piece that needs to happen with that. And when it comes to the school funding, if you were to pursue an override, let's say, I know nobody likes to use that word, but if that were the case, you'd want to start early. And I don't know what that would mean. We have the new fire station construction, that, there was talk about pursuing a debt exclusion for that. Also, on the school side of things, you know, if two towns voted, and then one, you don't want to be the one that doesn't, and then you're left having to come up with that, that financial obligation for the school budget.
What do you mean?
So, two towns, for the most part, control...
Yeah, but in this case, as I understand, all three towns have to vote unanimously, unanimously.
No, I don't believe that to be the case.
Would you check that? Because I was told that the other day.
I will check that.
So, we have the opportunity to meet with the Finance Committee two weeks from today.
Correct.
And that's, that's going to be a pretty important meeting.
Yes.
If you can give any information to us beforehand?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Get a chance to review it?
Will they be coming to our meeting, or... No, we'll go to Finance.
And actually, that's the same day we meet with Senator Fernandez, right?
Oh, yeah, I think he's coming here, yes.
Finance is at night, though, right? Five o'clock?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. I mean, should we have our, a regular meeting or a posted meeting?
We have our meeting at two anyway.
That day?
Yeah.
So, they're 12, two, and five thirty.
I can see if any of the Finance folks are available to come to our meeting. I can check their availability.
In lieu of, there, shouldn't it?
In lieu of, yeah.
Or could we do our regular meeting as part of meeting with Senator Fernandez?
I don't know how that would work, but...
Okay.
It's supposed to be a casual open among just the leaders of the... You can always switch the selectmen's meeting book, push it out a week, or bring it in a week.
Yeah, we could change that, too.
I mean, I have no problem with all three, just put it be more...
Condensed, timewise.
Yeah.
All right, let me see what I can figure out. I can look at that.
Okay. Correspondents?
We have the request for the annual bike ride, the Best Buddies Challenge Bicycle Ride, and to utilize some of our town roads, and that is scheduled for May 31st, and they have already been in touch with the Police Department.
And this is something we've done year after year.
Correct.
Last year, okay. So, I would make a motion to approve the Best Buddies Challenge Bicycle Ride application for use of town roads, with understanding that they will coordinate with the Plimpton Police Department.
Second.
I think you... All those in favor?
Aye.
We have some minutes, December 16th and January 6th.
I don't have anything to sign. I don't have things for you to sign.
Yeah, yeah. Send them down with time as we go.
So, that can, that can just be John?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, you're okay on the December 6th minutes?
Yeah.
January 6th, yes. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the January 6th minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the other one was 12 16, did we already do that?
No, you didn't have them last time.
Have we seen those?
They were sent with it.
Then I looked at it, because I read those.
And so did I.
No problem.
Yes, no problem. Yes, no problem. No, no problem.
So, I'll make a motion that we accept the December 16th to 2024 minutes as written.
And second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, Bray, that we have to sign?
Yes, sir. I'm going to sign. This is for town, for the town election, and, and the calendar.
Do you have a rave? Pardon, do you have a rave?
Of course. Just tell me when. I guess we have to, we're done with the minutes of, we're onto raves.
So, my rave is for the Massachusetts Municipal Association in general, and the annual conference in particular. Wonderful resource. When I started out as a selectman, there was so much less support available. Love the annual meeting, couldn't make it this year, there's so much good stuff, and so much, as Liz mentioned, so much opportunity to meet with others in a similar position, and inevitably, what we find out is that...
And inevitably, what we find out is the problems that we kind of feel like are utterly unique to us are actually much more general, and a lot of knowledge out there to give us a Thank you. And that's my rave. I think my rave was for, I've sat through these Habitat for Humanity presentations, and I'm always, always amazed at the amount of work they do, when you go on their site and see, and how they do it in a way that, as they call it, sweat equity. So it's not just giving somebody something, they actually earn it. So if we can make that a priority, to find something this year to go forward with, that would be great. We do keep looking. There must be somewhere, some land, that somebody is thinking of. And you tend to reach out to more people than certainly any of us. I mean, to the extent we could find somebody who would be willing, that would be great. Are we signed? Are we got more?
Signed and good, and thank you.
So unless there's any more business, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you all.
Thank you.